Welcome councillors, welcome to the media. Welcome to our guests who are speaking in public forum. We do have public forum today, so our first speakers, Matt Harvey and Trevor Waikawa, and they'll be addressing us on climate change. The floor's yours, just remember with your microphones.
Is this working? Yeah, cool. Kia ora everyone, thanks for taking the time to have us here today. So we sit here before you not as experts but as concerned students and members of society. We're only two of the tens of thousands of young people that marched around New Zealand for climate change action on March 15th, and only two of millions more that'll march this Friday, the 24th of May, around the world. We march because the decision-makers, industries and corporations who run our civilisation have failed us and future generations. Short-sightedness in the last 200 years since the dawn of the industrial revolution has put not just our way of life at risk, but more importantly the natural world as we know it at risk. Civilisations have been around for roughly 5,000 years, and we have been using fossil fuels for roughly the last 200 years. Now just recently we have passed 415 parts per million of CO2 in the atmosphere. This is the most ever in human history, spanning back way more than 4 million years, back when Antarctica had trees on it, growing on it, sorry. Two weeks ago, the Intergovernmental Science Policy Platform on Biodiversity and Ecosystem Services, the IPBS, released a new report stating that more than 1 million species globally are at risk of extinction, and more than 4,000 of those are from New Zealand. 60% of wild animal populations have disappeared in the last 40 years, and the future as it stands is not looking much better. This, as many scientists would agree, has put us in a human-caused sixth mass extinction event. We must remember that we do not inherit the earth from our ancestors, but we borrow it from our grandchildren, and that we are a part of nature and not apart from it. What we do now collectively and individually will have massive implications for future generations. We understand that the council has taken steps towards addressing the climate and ecological crises, however, we do not need steps, we need to be sprinting. Last year, the most cited scientifical article in the world claimed that we have 12 years to sort our acts out or face irreparable and runaway damage to earth's ecosystems. Its ability to support our way of life and wellbeing is seriously at risk. Therefore, today we ask you, the Dunedin City Council, to declare a climate and ecological emergency, following that declared by the Nelson and Christchurch councils. The cost of inaction is far greater than the cost of action. By doing nothing, we are burdening future generations with the environmental and social costs of things that we and generations before us have caused and could have potentially prevented. Local councils, we believe, should play a much greater role to address the huge environmental issues we face, and we have identified some things that you should potentially consider. So firstly, to declare a climate and ecological emergency as soon as possible. And then, some things that we sort of think could be addressed are commissioning a report on the state of the Dunedin environment, or a citywide ecological assessment. These reports or report could be used to potentially identify areas that we can improve on in our environmental stewardship, and implement action plans to address these issues. We also think that increasing education and awareness of the crises we face is a major point that we can improve on. The issues that we face are all interconnected in the web of life, which includes us, and therefore need to be addressed together. So this kind of wraps up my speech, but I'll leave you with a quote. If you want to be different, then show it, and take responsibility for your actions for the sake of this planet and all species living on it. Thank you.
Would you be happy to take questions? Questions councillor, councillor Gary.
Thank you Max and Trevor, I know it takes a certain amount of courage to come here to this particular environment and speak, and I really appreciate your engagement. And thank you for the request you've made, which are very specific in the urgency that you ask of us. I want to ask you a question, which is, what do you say to those decision-makers who do not understand the urgency of this and do not accept climate change as a thing?
Why are you in politics? Well, I don't know, I guess, do you understand what science is? And, I don't know, yeah, I guess, why you're in politics is the main thing. This is the future generations that are being put at risk here, and you have a responsibility to do your job and serve them well, I guess.
So could I just clarify, what you're saying to us is you expect us to accept this and expect us to be doing something about it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you very much for coming today. Firstly, do you mind sending us your words? That'd be fantastic, I want to pick up some more of the detail. The second question I have is, last week we had annual plan, we had one group come along and invite us to think about our decisions in a 40-year timeframe, which was, at the moment, we don't have a really good measure for sustainability, and I'm just wondering, a lot of the decisions we make are business-as-usual decisions, but we don't have that lens about what will affect be so much, both as a rates burden or a cost, but equally, will it be a decision we're really proud of in 40 years' time, given the quite different context that we're, I think, we'll be leaving for you guys to manage. But it seems such a long time out, and I'm just wondering, what timeframes would you be looking at for us to be considering what difference we have to make? I mean, you said 12 years last year.
I guess, it is an emergency, and so we should be treating it like an emergency. So, for a timeframe that we should be looking at addressing this, is probably 10 years maximum at the moment, and reassess, I guess, every three years or something like that, or every two years, to see how we're making progress towards our goals. That would be a good start. And, I guess, to your point about the DCC not having a solid sort of sustainability thing, we sort of identified, I think it was in 2007 or 2009, climate change policy that we found on the DCC website. One of the recommendations was a sustainability officer, and we couldn't find anything on the DCC website about said sustainability officer. We think that the council should be taking a more holistic approach to the environment. So, we kind of see the environment as being the backbone of everything, civilisation being within that, and then the economy being within that once again. So, for healthy people, we need a healthy environment, and so, yeah, I guess, first and foremost is establishing what is wrong within the city itself, involuntarily, and then from there we can decide how long we have to address this, and if it's urgent enough, and where we should be putting our resources. So I guess to address your question, 10 years is probably a safe bet, because beyond then, we're not sure if the modelling's accurate, or I guess what's actually to come.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thanks very much for your presentation. Two questions, first one is, are you going to give the same presentation to the regional council as well? It's kind of a suggestion, actually.
Haven't thought of it, but possibly, yeah.
Good. Many of our, if we do a resolution, if we were to go ahead and do a resolution on climate emergency, what's your thought about the fact that currently a lot of our targets are centred out as far away as 2050? Do you think, do you think that potentially if we are facing an emergency, we should be considering about moving those target dates in much closer so that...
Absolutely, yeah. Like I said to councillor Wilson, setting targets closer and then reassessing on a sort of regular time period, I guess, I think we'd be better off doing that than having it stretched out to 2050, when we, I guess, yeah, the models and predictions are saying that by 2050, everything might be stuffed, so we need to, yeah, we need urgency, and that's how we think this council should be addressing the issue.
And so therefore, if we are to go forward with a resolution, you would also want to see, and I think you kind of said it, that there's activities that follow in behind that resolution, it's not just like doing a like on Facebook, it's actually want to absolutely do something.
Yeah, absolutely. And, yeah, we think the council should have a greater involvement with the actions that take place, like obviously, they support community groups and whatnot, but one thing, Canterbury's got Environment at Canterbury, Auckland's got like rangers that they employ through the council, but we don't really see anything like that in Dunedin.
Environment Council is the regional council, basically.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Well, does, sorry, I'll open the floor, I guess, does the council have an environmental department within it, or is it spread throughout all the departments individually?
Because it's within our strategies, all of us, all of departments are meant to take an interest in the environment, so I think, maybe, maybe we do need to look at increasing our emphasis. Next question was from councillor Lord.
Yeah, look, I just wasn't sure if I heard you correctly, but did you say that the current level of CO2 is the highest it's ever been?
In human history, yeah.
In human history, okay.
Yeah, and human history being from when the first bipedal apes sort of evolved, more than 4 million years ago.
But you're not denying the fact that CO2 in the atmosphere has been up to 10 times that in the past, has been up over 4,000 at different times.
Yeah, in the history of the earth, which is 4.5 billion years, yeah. But the environment was much different back then, with higher sea levels and completely different compositions of biodiversity and the sort of ecosystems around the world.
No, I don't doubt that, yeah.
Councillor Hall.
You're referring to Environment at Canterbury. Environment at Canterbury, Environment Southland are identical to the Taga Regional Council, so they've just got a different name. So, Taga Regional Council should be the one that's in the situation, looking after the environment more than the city, because they look after the whole of Taga, with the Nganshane up to Hyde and Waka Waiti and what, hold on. Yeah, it just comes down up to the height here.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman, and we can lodge this under items for notification for the chair, I just thought it might be helpful, I can't assume that these two gentlemen will still be here by the end of the meeting, but one of the initial actions under Teo Turo, our environment strategy, is the ecosystem health boost, and I quote, identify and protect areas of ecological significance, establish biodiversity and ecosystem health measures, and establish integrated planning for key environmental areas, including air, water and soil standards. I don't recall any update on progress being reported back to any of the committees, so if we could get that, that might be helpful in terms of being able to communicate more widely the work that is hopefully going on in the areas that have been raised. Thanks.
Councillor Vandewoss.
You've said that it's an emergency, we need to do something about it, we need to address the issue, and that there need to be actions, and one action that you've suggested is support community groups. What other actions do you think the DCC should be undertaking to prevent the climate change that you're so worried about?
Kia ora, just answering that question, I'd think council-led initiatives in supporting community-based groups, such as, there's clean-up groups, there's individual planting groups, but I'd say even from a meeting we had with Dave Cole, Honorable Mayor, last week, supporting even outreach of the council, supporting ways on how people can do everyday change in their lives, to make the overall change for the betterment of the environment a whole lot easier.
Yes, but you keep saying the same thing, what I'm trying to drill down to is what the actual change is. I mean, you've talked about support community groups, and we're already doing that, and you've talked about change, but what actual changes do you think we as a council can do or promote that will actually make a difference?
Well, one of the things we've identified as being a significant environmental challenge around Dunedin is plastic, like single-use plastics. We've been to beach clean-ups, and just walking around the town belt, we see a significant amount of plastic rubbish dumped there. So I guess one of the things that we could do is to, we have to be proactive and reactive in this case, reactive as in taking the plastics out of the environment through clean-ups and cleanup initiatives, and proactive by reducing the amount of plastic that actually gets out into the environment, which could be through incentivising companies and people to not use these plastics, or to put a ban on the plastics.
Use the charge?
Use the charge, something like that. We also think that, this is, I guess, big picture kind of thing, we need like a rapid transition towards solar energy. I know other councils around the world have invested in community, sort of owned solar initiatives where people can put money in and collectively get reap the benefits from solar farms, or through solar panels in their individual houses. Potentially supporting more rewilding or reforestation around the city could increase or benefit us through our microclimate. Trees are significant stores of carbon, and they help with regulating and maintaining cool temperatures, and cloud and rain and stuff like that, so if we start now, 10, 15, 20 years in the future, we could have more forests around the city that keep our city cooler in the face of climate changes that comes along.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Whereas I agree that we should make plastics a producer responsibility, and I'm very keen on solar energy, I already run a farm off-grid solar, and keen on forestry as well, DCC City Forests already have very substantial forestry holdings. I don't see how any of that has any effect on climate whatsoever. Plastics, its existence or not makes no difference to the climate. Solar energy, all our energy in South Island is hydro, so it's not a solar contributor currently anyway.
Point of order, Mr Chairman. My understanding of the function of public forum is for submitters to present and then elected members to ask questions.
And I am asking one.
That doesn't appear to be what's happening here, so I would urge that the councillor get to the point of the question, as opposed to engaging in debate with the submissors.
Point of order. If I can do that. Sorry.
Could the chair please rule?
So, firstly, I need to rule on a point of order. So, I think councillor Vandewoss, you are getting close to entering in questions that are entering towards a debate.
Okay, I'll steer severely away from debate then, thank you very much for the warning. How does picking up plastics have any effect on climate change whatsoever?
I also mentioned ecological crisis.
Please, can you answer the question?
Yep. I can't answer that directly, but I did mention that we are in a climate and ecological crisis. Plastics are significant, they have significant harm on marine creatures, terrestrial creatures. I don't know if you know, but just in the last week or so, the world's deepest dive to the bottom of the Mariana Trench took place, and they found plastic bags at the bottom of the ocean. Microplastics have significant impacts on fish reproduction and predator-prey interactions and whatnot. Nine out of 10 seabirds have had, around the world, allegedly have plastic in their guts. Whales have been beached that have like hundreds of kilos of plastic in their stomachs. So, not directly relatable to the climate crises, but to the ecological crises, definitely there's...
Okay, is it even indirectly related to the climate crisis?
Couldn't tell you, I'd need more information, sorry.
Okay. Solar energy, how is that directly or indirectly related to climate crisis, the actions that you want to see?
Well, climate crisis with solar power, it's obviously 100% renewable, there's room for, I guess, well, just my opinion, room for Dunedin to become leaders in renewable energy. You say we get power from hydro stations, but there's also problems there with hydropower blocking off significant habitat for fish.
Yes, but getting back to climate, is not hydro completely separate from climate change issues?
Councillor Vandewoss, you are still treating that line of debate.
I have tried to get answers regarding climate change actions, and I don't believe I've had any. Thank you.
Should just add that, I did say I'm not an expert, so...
Well, thank you, Matt and Trevor, for coming and speaking to us today. I think the message I get out of it is that we all know as council that the environment is something that we need to be taking better care of, we have it in our strategies, perhaps the message you're giving to us is, we need to be a little bit more obvious in what we are doing, rather than what we are talking about doing. So, thank you for coming and reminding us about that. I would imagine that someone will request a paper that will come to council to determine whether this council will support climate emergency, so, but, well, once we get to items for the chair, that's what I would expect. Thank you for coming.
Awesome, thanks very much.
That brings us to our next speakers at the public forum, so we've got Donna Hall, Sarah Ramsey and Scott Mason from the Startup Dunedin Trust. All right, the floor's yours, you just do need to use the microphones if you're speaking.
Kia ora koutou, my name is Donna Hall, and I am the chief starter at Startup Dunedin. Here with me today to present is Sarah Ramsey, the chairperson of the Startup Dunedin Trust, and Scott Mason, a member of our board. Thank you for having us along today. I'm a recent addition to Startup Dunedin. I joined in January of this year, after spending the last eight years as manager at Pulse and Hugs. When applying for the chief starter role, I reflected on my experience with Startup Dunedin over the past 12 months, and I was really impressed by the traction being made. There was a lot of activity, and Startup Dunedin was becoming an extremely important pillar in our startup ecosystem. So what does success look like for us? It was really pleasing to see our annual ecosystem results reflected in reflecting the increase in activity and engagement. So our startups wanted two things, they wanted advice and they wanted investment. So we had 82 people indicate that they wanted to mentor our startups, and we had 55 people indicate that they were seeking to invest, and it's a testament to the success of our programmes. We currently run four startup programmes, so Audacious, Co-Starters, Challenger and The Distiller, and our focus in this coming year is around quality rather than quantity. We have had the opportunity to leverage our Co-Starters programme by collaborating with Heidi Renata of Innovate HQ. So Heidi is currently piloting a programme called Kanaki, which is working alongside the Ministry of Social Development, helping beneficiaries explore their startup ideas, and we're really excited by the opportunity that this could bring. So who makes up our ecosystem? There's often a misconception that entrepreneurs are young, male and tech, so our survey results are really interesting. So 57% are aged over 40, 37% were female, and only 22 identified as tech startups. Another interesting find was that 55 of the people that responded had relocated to Dunedin. Our startups are creating jobs. So, our survey results show 41% increased their team size on last year, 83% intend to hire, and 22% are hiring soon. We have some serious, serious talent in our startup community. We're now in the bootcamp stage of our challenger series, so we've got the top seven running through their startup journey with us. So I just want to highlight two of them today. So Windly, founded in late 2017, have just finalised their first round of investment in April, and are now recruiting three new team members, so that brings their total team to seven. And Cafe Logic, so Chris completed our Co-Starters programme back in 2015, successfully launched his product via a pledge-me campaign, and is back with Startup Dunedin's Challenger Series after competing at the Melbourne International Coffee Expo. So that's just an example of two of really high-growth startups that we are supporting. I'll now hand over to Sarah to have a talk to our strategy.
Thank you. Kia ora. Cool. So, look, I suppose what I thought I could talk about is, yes, we've had a lot of traction and momentum over the last, I think, last time we were in here was talking to you in September, so we've achieved an awful lot since then, and it's been fantastic to have Donna join the team. What does our strategy look like going forward? As we've talked about in the past, looking at our automation and our processes, and actually making the structure of our team more scalable, so that we can scale the programmes that we're offering, so that we can measure the data, so our audacious goal of 21 jobs, 21 companies by 2021, we can actually measure that, so that's a project that the team are working on at the moment, and it also means that we can grow our base of contacts nationally. We're focusing on our storytelling, so Angus in our team, who is effectively our marketing manager, he has been working with Taga Access Radio, another not-for-profit in the local community, and they are preparing 24 podcasts for us over this coming 12 months. So, those podcasts, the first person we interviewed was a Disney Imagineer, it would probably take all of the five minutes to explain exactly what that is, but the key word is Disney. So we're getting some really cool and very high-profile visitors to town, and also we'll be telling predominantly stories about local startups and communicating that across our national and international database. From a main strategy perspective, this coming year, we would really like to focus on developing the pitching skills and getting our startups investment-ready. So we work really hands-on with our startups and coaching them and creating opportunities for them to pitch better. We have seen, this is Abby Hyde, Abby and Jacob Manning have Windly, which is a local startup, they just closed out their latest round of funding, and they have pitched all over the country. Not saying that we've been responsible for that entirely, but both Scott and I were in Christchurch with them when they pitched to the Canterbury Angels, and we're really seeing that network grow. But, what we don't want is this, a beautiful bridge to nowhere. So what we have done is we've built this fantastic ecosystem, we have some really promising startups, but the South Island is recognised nationally as having a problem with funding pipeline, with investors. So what we're looking at is how do we get these startups to be investment-ready and make sure there is actually angel investment sitting there waiting for them. And so what we have started to look at, and Scott Mason has been instrumental in being the catalyst for this, is we are talking to Invest South Startup Queenstown Lakes, forming a, or actually we've signed a formal MOU about developing a Southern Angels group, where we can actually share pitches, resources, recognise the strengths and weaknesses that we each bring to the table, I think regionally and nationally even, startup, or Dunedin is starting to be recognised as a thriving ecosystem with a great pipeline of startups, whereas other regions have strengths such as big pots of money. So what we would like to do is share, and those discussions are well-advanced and really positive. We've also got some great relationships happening with the upper South Island, the Canterbury Angels, and we've begun discussions with New Zealand Trade and Enterprise Investment Team on helping to facilitate that South Island network. So personally, very excited about it, and I think, you know, this could be the start of transforming what's been a lot... what's been a longstanding issue in the New Zealand investment, what you would, investment network, investment environment, thank you. In addition to that, we are building more institutional relationships. Scott is FinDex and they are running the FoundX programme. So when we run a FoundX event, we could have between 150 to 200 people turn up to those events, plus we're live streaming them and Scott and his team at FinDex have personally put that out to the wider database and investor networks. And we've actually had investment inquiry come from Enterprise Angels and Ice House directly from live streaming those events. B&amp;Z are working quite closely with us and we're launching this week their first focus group for startups to practise their pitches and get in touch with local investors who will be interested in that space. And finally, in the investment piece, we're really looking forward to the new tender coming out from Callahan Innovation and working with our partners on how we can go for more funding around that for us to expand our incubation programme.
Just a little bit of housekeeping. We are at two o'clock, so I need to move that we extend public forum. Seconded councillor Wiley, all in favour? Again, carried.
Which brings us into question time.
Questions councillors, councillor Lord, then councillor O'Malley.
I was just wondering, like, the Angel Foundation or the people putting in capital, what sort of sums, or how low could that be? What sort of sums can make a difference for a startup company? Are we talking you need a million dollars or a half a million dollars or can they often be considerably smaller and what sort of amounts might be worthwhile?
Look, it really depends on the stage of the company itself. So early stage, very, very early stage seed funding, we've had situations where $25,000 have made a massive difference to get to an unimivable product and then be able to pitch the commercialisation story to raise more money. Most of the angel raises in this environment that we're in is around probably a half, a half mil, but you have angel raises up to sort of two million and then you get into that sphere where you're looking for VC money, which is a whole different story, I could go into about where it's not at the present time.
It's getting higher.
And then ultimately, the third stage tends to be private equity. One of the challenges that we have in our environment in Dunedin, New Zealand and Australasia is that private equity is moving to a much later stage of companies. So we're finding that there's a massive gap between seed funding and that.
So when you say a much later stage, are you meaning that before someone invests in a private company, they're going to invest in an infatil or a company that's much, is that what you mean, much further on the road, less risk?
Yeah, looking for fund growth as opposed to the creation and commercialisation stage of a company.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thanks for your presentation. I mean, I've got a fair familiarity with this environment, I could come to that word quickly. Are you going beyond angel investors for early-stage funding? You've got Callahan up there, I noticed as well. Because my experience with angels is it can be a fairly robust negotiation about ownership for that very first early investment and that could leave you in a position where you're not in a great place when you get to want to go into that institutional investor at the end. So I've got that one question and then sort of relates to that, can bundle them together. You talk about institutional investors, but they tend to be banks you're talking about at that point. Have you also considered, and Cafe Logic would be a good example, a manufacturer or corporation that is interested in the technology that the person is starting and actually wants to invest that institution in this? So it's not a bank, but in fact it's a, it's an end user of the product.
So if I can answer the first question, which was around the pitfalls of angel investing. One of the reasons that we are, or one of the things that we're talking quite strongly about in the MOU is actually around kind of ethics and morals and values. And there will be things like term sheets and standard code of practice around what is acceptable and what isn't. So when they come actually through that organisation, we agree that there are some deals that are done that are not in the best interests of the founder. So that's certainly not a space that anyone around that angel table will be operating in. Also, you know, one of the benefits of us collaborating is we don't have our founders who need to be focused on growing the company, spending six to eight months of their year fundraising, $25,000 cheques from 20 different angels. It's a really efficient process.
Yeah, so just to reiterate on that point, one of the key aspects is that our documentation we want to be slightly flavoured as founder-friendly in terms of an international context. You know, I think that's important. The second thing is, as Sarah said, if you're talking to one organisation representing a large number of potential investors, you're having one conversation and that's just about efficiency. In terms of options, look, in the commercial environment, there's any number of ways to raise money. Angel investors are one way, but they're not always the best way and that goes right down to not even taking money quite often is the right answer. Or taking money from aligned businesses or joining together, forming partnerships, forming hubs is another way of doing it. So I don't think we have a particular fixation, we just see that in respect of that one source of funds is a massive gap that somebody has to do something about.
To add to your second question, we are certainly talking to some of the venture capital funds and have active interest from a number of them from Auckland and Tauranga and Wellington that regularly come to town and talk to us. Some of the feedback that we get from them and also from NZVIF Fund is that they want to see an active angel scene because that helps to qualify the startups before they're ready for those VCs.
Comes up as a report, but it's to the Callahan Innovation. Currently, their main South Island office is in Christchurch and then we offer a regional support. Given that, and I know that most, a lot of these startups are not tech, but tech is a big part of startup, do you think it would be good to send a message back to the government and Callahan and in fact they could be investing better in the Dunedin area and actually having a proper active office here?
I think if you think about the context of where we've been in Dunedin, where the activity levels have historically been quite low, why would they? But where we, with the support of council over the last few years, have created a huge amount of momentum, it's getting to the stage that we're seen as the hub for the actual activity. So my question to Callahan will be eventually, why wouldn't you?
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr Chair. That segues very nicely into my question. So I recently attended a FoundX event and I was really impressed at the quality of the ideas, the numbers of teams, the variety of skills and the smart minds in the room. I'm interested how we compare, I'm always interested to know how Dunedin fits into the national scene. How do we compare in terms of all those things, the ideas and so forth? Because it seemed to me they were extraordinary.
Look, I think that, you know, the reality check is that in every town across New Zealand and in every town across the world, there's smart people trying to think of creative things. At the moment, the degree of momentum and there's a large number of people seeing Dunedin as the place to come to, to explore them, tells us that we're doing something right. I think the next stage is the quality of the support that we give them and ensure that they're ready to go to the world because there's no point, points spending a lot of activity and energy building a company that's only going to service Dunedin if we want true economic growth in Dunedin.
So our point of difference?
Actually, I think our point of difference, and I made this comment to the council last year, is I think our companies are encouraged to start with a worldview and understand that their market, albeit it might be tested here in Dunedin or tested here in New Zealand, they need to be building something that the world wants. And I think that gives us competitive advantage. So isolation is actually in some ways an advantage in that sense.
Excellent, thank you.
Councillor Elder.
Thank you Chair, and thanks for coming along. I've got a few questions. Next steps, so once someone's created a really good idea and they're starting to set up, sometimes they leave Dunedin and have to do things in Christchurch because we have not capacity in certain areas. So what are your ideas around next steps about developing that capacity in Dunedin?
Do you want me, is this perhaps speaking specifically to a certain startup?
Maybe.
Yep, in manufacturing. So, look, I think what we want to see is the, yeah, we want to see the startup succeed and stay in Dunedin. The reality is that sometimes there are services that simply don't exist and if we can assist in helping to get the networks and the connections and the mentors as well. So in the manufacturing space, we have Nigel Banford on our board, he's been very proactive as a mentor, so he will spend time with startups in that space to sit down and see if there's a way that we can do it in Dunedin. And a lot of the time what we're founding is, finding is that the head office functions, even if some components of the business need to go outside of town, that they are choosing to remain in Dunedin because we have the talent and the skills in those high-end areas.
I probably was going to say very similar and it's interesting just seeing a pattern on a number of businesses at the moment where the challenge at Dunedin is access to talent and they've been very successful in getting some talent to come here, but not in the volumes that they need to achieve their growth objectives. And I've got two businesses at the moment that are looking at setting secondary sites, either in New Zealand or outside New Zealand, but they're determined to remain here and there's something about the city that makes them want to stay.
Cool. Now, 10 years ago, people didn't even hear of startup hubs or whatever. How many hubs are there in Dunedin now for startup, shared space?
Coworking spaces.
Coworking spaces, yes, sorry.
So there's four. So the Startup Dunedin provides The Distiller, which is in a university building and it's a semi-free space and we've got three fully professional market rate spaces in Petri-Creative HQ, sorry, Innovate HQ, must not get those two wrong, sorry about that, and Regis. And even within that, you've got some expansion happening. The important part of, again, from a council perspective, looking at funding Startup Dunedin is we don't see our role as holding on to people in our startup space. We see our role as preparing them so that they can afford to go to the paid spaces to free up space for the next bunch.
Cool. Last question, how has the traction been with Audacious since Startup Dunedin took over?
So towards the end, sorry, towards the end of last year, Audacious was in a bit of a holding pattern. So Audacious sits across the University of Atago and the Atago Polytechnic. So we took it on board fully this year. Last year there was 15 people in the programme. So we started this year with Tensity, we had 1,000 ideas over three days. We ended up having 15, 57 people sign up for the programme. We're in a position where we want, we had 22 people wanting to pitch next week. So we're actually going to have to stream our pitching and just showcase the top 10. Like it's an exciting time. So we have Rachel Butler running the Audacious programme. She is working actively with the Atago Polytechnic to implement a Edgibits programme, which will sit across Audacious and potentially all of our startup programmes. So it means that people can get a micro credential for attending Startup Weekend, conceivably young enterprise, co-starters and of course Audacious.
Councillor Vandevos.
Thank you for coming and telling us today what you've been up to. The startup policy, if you like, for dealing with new applicants, do you have a matrix or a tick box selection criteria for deciding which enterprises to help with seed funding? Or do you go on a case-by-case basis or do you just try and support all of the applicants that you have?
I mean, we're not giving away any funding, so essentially we will try and fill our funnel of startups and we do try and help as many people as we can. So, and we do that by filtering them into the appropriate programme. So this year we've repurposed The Distiller in a way that is not competing with any of our coworking spaces, it's got touched on. So we're calling it a light-touch incubator, so it's the holding pattern before you can go into a programme. You know, there are some ideas that aren't going to float, but we coach people in a way that they come to that realisation themselves.
So you basically try and support everybody, but you don't have a particular formula by which you identify hopeful seed businesses?
Yeah, we do to a certain extent. So we could spend all day sitting down having coffees with startups that have amazing ideas. So what we have is a qualification process. So if they take the time to fill out the form and actually show that they've taken, gone through a number of steps to develop their idea, to validate their idea, then we will make time for them. And then we have different qualification depending on the programme they go through. So for something like Challenger, they need to be internationally growth-ready and we have a qualification process to go through on that.
Great, so, and do you have a policy that sets out these criteria or is this, or is this just how it's evolved?
It is how it's evolved, but there are terms and conditions that they accept when they sign up to the programme. And then for something like Challenger, we also have the final three that get through, it'll be Peter Cotchison, Chair of Callahan, that's doing the judging, John Gallagher from Four Satafa, New Zealand Trade and Enterprise Investment Team and Kyle from Deloitte. So we've got very qualified people.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Laufeysoe.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you for your presentation. So I note that last time you came along, I asked you about working with the involvement of Tang Tsuenu. So congratulations on your programme, working with Heidi. So, so all those young people, the interns, are they Maori?
So there's actually two programmes that we have worked across with Heidi. So there is an intern programme out of the University of Atago and so they are all Maori and Pacifica business students. And so we helped with the process to find Maori business for them to work on. So they essentially consult without consulting because they're not quite at that stage yet. Yeah, so that is a kind of a, another string to the Kanaki bow, yeah.
So forgive my ignorance, I probably am a pain in butt to Mr Christie when I always ask about wellbeing and growth, the contrast between, you know, success, economic success and the actual impoverishment of our communities and also the challenges that young people are banging on the door about in terms of climate injustice and the crisis. So in your planning and your strategic visioning ahead, how do you take into account those challenges?
Well, we've got a few initiatives actually around that. So one of the things that we're looking at around our incubation funding is having specific funding tagged to sustainability-related startups and socially responsible startups. And we hope to work more closely with Atago Community Trust on things like that. Around the, Donna has some ideas around the Waste Management Grant that Dunedin City Council has.
Yeah, so we recently met with the team in the waste minimisation area of the building and we're just formulating some plans to run. Does everyone know what a Startup Weekend is? So 54-hour competition build a business from, you know, where to go. So we've come up with a concept of a change jam and what that will involve is bringing our community together to talk about waste minimisation across our city. And we're going to start with some really big ideas and then we're going to kind of narrow it back down over the weekend so that we can hopefully have some really nice business cases come out of that to apply for the fund in September. So we have Ray O'Brien from Atago Polytechnic and we have Alice Marsh, who is one of the founders of the Social Experiment, if you've ever heard about that. Again, it's startup-focused, but it's more a focus on wellness and mindset coaching. So we're really, really excited to So we're really, really excited to, we will be very excited to launch that when we do.
One other thing is being a founder and startup is a very lonely and very stressful process, and it's, mental health is something that is high on our agenda this year, and we take really seriously. We do have a responsibility to make sure we're not just constantly pushing, that we have a responsibility to make sure people that are engaging with us are looked after, and there is a process to just reach out and say, are you okay? It's also making sure that we put time in to build in the community, so that founders are supporting each other. And we have had some discussions with B&amp;Z around helping to fund basically a mental health and resilience programme for us to run with our startups.
I think one of the other parts of it, if I may, is around education and expectation setting, and getting the startups to understand that it is a long and tough journey. You know, we have these images of start business today and a billionaire by tomorrow, that's not the real world, that's a grind. And going back to councillor Andavis's question, in some way, we have honest conversations too, because there's no point plugging away at something that's never going to happen. So that's, you know, about a health outcome as much as it is about practical commercial outcomes.
Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. Donna, do you mind just going back about four slides? There was a slide about, one more, yeah, that one. 50% aged over 40, that was a really impressive stat, and the other one was 55% relocated to Dunedin. Can you expand on that a little bit more, like, what were the themes that you got out of that?
Out of the ecosystem survey, or just out of?
Well, like, even just those two stats.
Yeah, they're both interesting ones, so that was sitting across our wider survey. So I believe there was about 175 respondents in that dataset. And, and so obviously, the 57% of those aged over 40 were across kind of the pillars of our ecosystem, rather than just our startups. And if we drop to those middle two stats, they are specifically startup-focused. Yeah. Yeah, essentially, they've come from everywhere.
I think, yeah, to add to that, what we are finding is, and it's, it's happening in Dunedin, I think we've noticed it in a change in our demographic in general, is that we're getting more people in their 30s and 40s that are coming back to town. As an employer myself and a number of businesses, I have noticed it's becoming easier to get skilled people in middle management, which eight, nine years ago, when I first started my business, was really hard. So I think that personally, what we are seeing is people my age moving back with school-aged children who want to be in Dunedin. And a lot of the time, the only option is for them to start, start up.
And another question, you know, obviously, you had a pitch for funding, and which we're going to be discussing soon, but what else can the DCC do to help? And one of the thoughts, you know, again, you've touched on the 72-hour Challenger coming up on, what else can we do?
I guess, I mean, one of the things is give, give our startups a go. Like, if they knock on the door of the council and they've got a product that you can use, give them the opportunity. I mean, that's one of the, the really big things that we, we hear. You know, you've got a large organisation, and, you know, there's a lot of good that can be done by just giving people an opportunity.
Even if it's an unpaid trial for a local startup to go out into national and international context and have the Dunedin City Council logo on their website, is a big step in validation for them, so we can't underestimate how much that means.
I think one of the things we asked for last year was visibility of the council table at events, and just acknowledge that, thank you very much for those who are coming, and for those who haven't been to FoundX or similar events, please, please do, because it just shows our community that this group is, you know, behind what they're trying to achieve, for their own good and also for the good of the economy. I think the, the other thing that we would like to do as a startup ourselves, you think about that context, over what we've done the last couple of years, is that we're maturing, we're getting much better at delivering our programmes, and we're producing much better metrics, and we want to get to that point where you have enough confidence in us so that we're not at this table every year, other than maybe reporting good news. So that would certainly be something that I'd love you guys to consider in due course.
That seems to have dried up our questions. I'd just like to thank you for the time you've taken to come and present today, and for all the effort you've put into the startup space. There's certainly some vibe out there now that we are seeing a community of startups that are building that inertia that we need. So we do, I hope we do continue to support you, but you will still have to come and talk to us, because we want to know the good news. So thank you.